Good evening, welcome. We have a full house tonight. And you'll hear a little bit more about what's going on in just a few minutes. But I'm Rick Mason, and this is the March meeting of the Lake Mills Area School District Board of Education. Our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification meeting notice?
The agenda was submitted to the Lake Mills leader on February 28th, and then posted at the Lake Mills Library, the Lake Mills Post Office that make the Lake Mills, and also on our district website.
Thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order. And if we could stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roque, please.
Rachel Davies.
Here.
Dawn Delaney.
Here.
Robert DiNperio.
Here.
David Radell.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here. Any agenda revisions? I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move the agenda be approved as printed.
Second.
Moving second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. And we're going to go on to the board reports. I'm going to turn it over to District Administrator Pam Strike.
So the reason that all of you are here tonight is to talk about all of our youth apprenticeship people. And so I'd like to introduce Cindy Sandberg, our Jefferson County School-to-Work Coordinator. This is going to be her last year with us in that role, but she's not retiring.
Go ahead.
She's still working on the Perkins Grant. But we just really want to thank her for her years and years and years of wonderful service to our students. And she will introduce her staff and all of our students.
Thank you for having us this evening. Yes, I've been with the Youth Apprenticeship Program since it started back in ages and eons, it's over 20, well, actually almost 30 years old this year. And I am finally being able to transition out. And Heather Dziewalski will be taking over as the new coordinator. She comes to us with a lot of industry experience, was one of the first students with Star College Now program, so she understands that. Actually started a career at Watertown High School while she's going to Dodgelin High School, and has been working in industry all her career in many different facets. She brings a lot of industry experience to this program. And so this evening, I'd like to say thank you for having us here. And the other person that's with us is Rich Dykstra. He's our business rep. He's been wonderful at going out and recruiting the businesses and talking to the businesses in our area. This year with our youth apprenticeship, we projected 195 students, and we have 200 students enrolled at this point in time. And 19 came from your district here, which I think is wonderful for the size district you are. I want to thank the people that, from your district, that are so influential. Diane Sweeney, where are you Diane? Diane stepped in as being the School-to-Work Coordinator this year, and has been doing wonderful. Jennifer Iverson, where's Jennifer? She's our Business Finance. Audrey Vincenzi, HLTN Health, one of our new staff members. Luke Guedenfeld, Agriculture. And Kevin O'Brien for Manufacturing and Auto. So thank you to all our staff. So with that, now I'd like to take and introduce our students and their employers. So when we call your name, if you can come up, and we'll give you your certificates and go from there. So Mia Schrader and Virginia Klecker, and please come up with your employers. Mia Schrader and Virginia Klecker were Paradigm Farms, and Virginia Klecker was also at Generational Farms. Ag students. Another ag student, Ashley Nossen, and Samantha Spiegelhoff with Dulph Dairy with Patricia Krieger-Dulph. Then we have Madeline Miller Nielsen and Lily Kussman at Nielsen Farms with Chris Nielsen and Mary Ann Nielsen, who are the employers. There we go. We'll get it all figured out here. Very good. And another ag student, Trevor Messmer, who was with Messmer Farms with David Messmer. Aaron Strauss with Strausdale Holsteins with Bruce Strauss. And Ryan Demrow with J&amp;L Tire and Chad Wustenberg. That was an autotech student. Finance, Megan Palzine with AKT Business Service, Andy Barnes, one of our wonderful employers that seems to keep coming back year after year after year. This is great, you know, this nice thing is we see some of these same employers over and over and over again, it's so wonderful. And then with health, Cheyenne Mitchell with Lake Mills Health Services with Kate McCready, one of our health students. There we go. And finally, Elamun Pajado, and he was at Lake Mills Jimmy John's with Brett Ward. There we go. This program could not take and survive without the support of our parents, US administrators, you know, the employers and everybody else. And of course, we do want to say a big thank you to Pam Strike, who is retiring. So we have a little certificate and a little token of our appreciation for all the support that she has given us through all these years, especially with the remodeling to actually advance our programs. For a small county that we are, that we have four commercial food service facilities for training students in the food service industry, and this one being our newest, it's a compliment to the support of our communities here. And then having the great manufacturing facility that we've gotten, business, ag, all of them's been wonderful. It's been such a support to our programming for training and giving the students the ideas of what they might want to do for careers. Thank you to the parents for encouraging your students, and again, thank you just everybody for supporting the program. And to Pam, thank you very much.
Can all of you guys go over there so that Sarah can take your picture?
Any employers that didn't get your phone?
Teachers?
Any other employers? There's a picture.
I don't know.
I'll go in the library.
Oh.
Good idea. I'd be a little more seen.
Yeah, I have to go get his picture.
I can take charge.
And yes, parents, you are free to leave. You don't have to stay. Thanks again for all your support.
Make sure to get your certificates, I'm so sorry.
Employers, they're looking for you. Employers are supposed to be over for this picture, too. That's all right. Sure. Go.
Oh, it's.
It's there.
It's later. It's.
It is number four.
You have to wait a while.
It'll be in about, it'll be in about six minutes.
All right.
Yeah, that's fine. We enjoy that, too. We enjoy that, too.
All right, here we go. Back to the board meeting. Mr. DiNperio, facilities update.
Well, the update that I have is really kind of historical, because several weeks ago, we had an opportunity to have an open house and ribbon cutting here at the high school. It was very well attended. I think there was a good opportunity for the community to have an, to see our facility, learn a little more about all the good things that are going on here. So that was, that was an exciting time. And just a reminder that the referendum projects are not quite done this summer. Will be the final phase of the sprinkler project here when the school is out, so.
And landscaping.
Oh, and the landscape. You didn't, you didn't like what you saw there? Okay.
Dr. Delaney, correspondents.
Correspondents, we received two items. The Arts Alliance of Greater Lake Mills sent a thank you note for their Super Bowl event that was housed at the elementary school. And we also received notice from the School District of Jefferson that a petition submitted by a resident to alter school district boundaries from Jefferson to Lake Mills was denied.
Thank you. Welcome back, and Maggie. Administrative reports. Mr. Vogel, high school principal.
Of course, the building is a very busy place right now. I do want to thank Mrs. Strike for allowing me to go to the Marine Educator Workshop in San Diego last week. Went to the Marine Corps Recruit Depot, spent a lot of time there at Camp Pendleton, basically to learn about the Marine Corps, what it has to offer, and learned a lot of opportunities for our kids, and pass along to Ms. Sweeney that if kids are interested in something like that, that the Marine Corps has a lot to offer kids right out of high school and in college and/or after college as well. So it was a great five days, and the weather was okay as well. So when I was gone, we had the pre-ACT and the ACT. Again, our pre-ACT is given to all of our sophomores, and the ACT is a statewide test for all of our juniors. It went well. Congratulations to our girls' basketball team. Maggie's going to talk about that briefly, but again, this Thursday at 3:00 up in Green Bay. Also, seniors busy with portfolios. Portfolios are due here in another week or so. We have a choir band orchestra, huge concert tomorrow night in the Opera Gym. Spring play coming up after spring break, April 3rd and 4th. Working on our staffing needs for next year as we get our course numbers in for next fall's schedule. And then I just want to give another shout out to Ms. Body and members, our students, who are members of our Battle of the Books Club here at the high school. I didn't know about, much about them. I was not in Battle of the Books. I know it's a surprise to you, but it's where students read over 20 books and then answer questions and are quizzed and go against other schools in the state about those 20 books. And they competed against 54 teams and got fourth place in the state, which I think is pretty awesome. So congratulations to those students and Ms. Body.
Questions? Thank you. Wait a minute, we're going to go to Maggie. Hang on. She's the student representative of the board from the high school.
All right, so it has been a very busy month for sports and other extracurricular activities at the high school. This weekend, the girls won sectionals, and they will be playing at State on Thursday at 3:00 PM at the Resh Complex in Green Bay. And both the girls' and boys' basketball teams work conference champions this season. The powerlifting team competed in the state competition this past weekend, and five of the team members have qualified and are going to the national competition in Texas, including Tatum Riggelman, David Klein, Kevin Matarom, Hunter Beekel, and Josh Leskoher. There is a high school choir orchestra and band concert tomorrow night at 7:00 in the gym. Last weekend was the solo and ensemble festival at Lodi High School, and many of the students' pieces qualified for the state competition in April. One of the Battle of the Books teams placed fourth in the state last week after competing with schools from all over Wisconsin. Every member of the forensics team has qualified for their district meet, which is next Monday, where they will have the chance to qualify for their state meet in April. And this week and next week, the Interact Club is raising money for the Heifer International. This organization aims to end hunger and poverty while supporting local farms in the community. So overall, it has been a very successful winter for everyone at Lake Mills High School.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Bauer, middle school principal.
I just have to start by saying I am so proud of all of the things that we get to see our kids grow up and do, and how it manifests itself, all the work that Amanda and I do. So congratulations to all the great things that our kids are doing coming out of high school. Some of the kids in our building recently participated in the talent show. We had a record number of entrances in it, so it was 29, 29 performances, and it took two hours. So we are looking at how to modify some of that, because keeping middle schoolers in the bleachers for two hours straight can be a show in itself, right? So we also have, coming up at the end of third quarter, March Madness, where we do some basketball with, with our kids. So teachers will be playing basketball with some of our kids the day before spring break. We will be then, after spring break, going into our forward testing. So all of that to look forward to coming up in March and April. Currently, I'm also, Mr. Grundle and I are working on grant presentation for Playworks to continue some of the programming for next year, kind of talking about our goals. And one of the goals being to get Playworks into the classroom. So it will be supported through Playworks, bringing some SEL into the classroom, and that kind of goes into our next piece, which is, we are also looking at a couple of different programs. We had Anna Silberg, as I said, come present, present to us at our February 21st in service. She did a great job, the staff loved her. And now we're looking at her coming back to support second step, which is an SEL curriculum, but within the classroom. So we'll have two different groups of professionals coming in to support our SEL programs within the classroom next year. Lake Hail, we are beginning our scheduling process. Forms went out, forms will go out tomorrow about course selection, and I will be working on schedules over spring break. We also started our nurtured heart training. I don't know if you remember, but a few weeks ago, probably six weeks ago, Mary Carncross and I went to Tucson to become certified trainers in the nurtured heart approach. After completing that, we are certified to come back and teach some of the methods to parents, staff, and those types of things. So we started with our own staff last weekend. We did a six-hour training for three of our staff, all seventh grade teams, so now the entire seventh grade team is trained. And we will have about 20 total people trained after we do our six-week training, which will be one hour a week for six weeks with some reflection time on, on that approach. So that will also finish out our spring. Any questions?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mrs. Thompson, elementary principal.
Good evening. Couple of updates from the elementary school. I first want to thank Mrs. Pam Mowen for her work in Read Across America. Last week, we were able to celebrate reading in all of our classrooms, kicked off with an assembly to start out the week, and then special activities throughout the week. We ended it on Friday with a sock collection, socks on socks, and we collected 1,021 pairs of socks. We were thinking maybe 200 to 300, and we were overwhelmed with response. So those socks will be donated to the Community Coalition in Watertown, the Salvation Army in Madison, and then in Jefferson County for foster families. Wanted to also thank the parents who came out for parent-teacher conferences this past month to hear about their child's education and ways to support them at home. All of our report cards have now been posted in Skyward on family access, so parents can look at the report cards via Skyward. An update just on some of our professional development. We have been trained, our four-year-old kindergarten teachers, five-year-old kindergarten teachers, and our early childhood staff have been trained from the Greater Watertown Health Foundation in Talk, Read, Play. We are now what is referred to as trusted messenger. So we can go out in the world and talk about Talk, Read, Play. And the first stop that we made was our 4K Parent Roundup. So on Friday morning, we greeted about 35 families, and were able to talk and share information about Talk, Read, Play, and share an app called Room. Room is an app for parents to download onto their phones or their computers, and it pushes out a notification for families, for parents of different things that they, and easy things that they can do with their children to help build their brain through talking, reading, and playing. So that was our first step in our trusted messenger work. In total, we have 88 families signed up for 4K Roundup. 11 of those are 5K students coming in next year, and then the rest, 77 for four-year-old kindergarten. And then finally, Ready Math has been a topic of conversation at the elementary school. We've been receiving some additional training on how to best support our students at kindergarten. We learned ways on how to incorporate more play and hands-on learning utilizing our Ready Math curriculum. In our math committee, we analyzed some data and looked at ways that we can use our assessments to better communicate with our families on how students are doing and their progress that they're making. So those are things still in the works as we're still implementing this new math curriculum. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Do you have a Brown report?
I do. Mrs. Brown was not able to be with us this evening, shocking, she has a sick child. Just wanted to share that we are part of the Rural Autism Support Team, and because of that, we are hosting a one-day Autism Summers Institute here in Lake Mills. And because we're part of the consortium, all the employees that attend will be, will attend for free, and families can come for just $25. And then during every year, I'd like for her to mention just kind of where we are with our numbers in special education. So at this time, according to DPI for the 1819 school year, the state average is 14.04% of students in a public school setting are labeled as having a disability. Our Lake Mills School District is at 13.5. So that's, that's just a check and balance that we have to make sure we're not over-identifying, not under-identifying. We're kind of right in, in that good spot. And then she had mentioned that if you want any further breakdown of statistics by disability level or any of that kind of information, you can email her, and she can share that information with the board.
I have a question, Pam.
Yes.
On the summer, the Summer Institute.
Yes.
Kind of goes along with the question you asked me today about helping people with being able to afford the bus. Would there be families for this that might not be able to afford the $25, but would like to come?
I can check on that, and then we also have the Family Connections money as well.
I'd encourage maybe Melissa to.
Sure.
Not limit people if they can't afford it. I'm sure there's some organizations here in town that would be happy to make that happen for them.
Good point.
Thank you for reminding me about that.
Yep.
All right, Mrs. Brockert, Director of Business Services.
Hi, thank you. I'm just going to highlight a little bit about the food service, because one thing came to my mind was that last week was National School Breakfast Week. And Kathy Coyman, our food service director, tried to tie in what they were doing at the elementary school with Read Across America. So she had some of the meals for breakfast and lunch were tied to Dr. Seuss, such as green hard-boiled eggs, or one fish Graham crackers, and Dr. Seuss red and white yogurt parfait, I listed a couple of them, Go Corn Dog Go, Slippery Joe's with Who Hash Browns, one fish, two fish sticks, and Hop On Popcorn Chicken. So she tried to, yeah, she tried to work with the, the school and trying to, you know, keep the theme going in the lunch program and breakfast program as well. I also attached just a chart of the meals that we've been serving for breakfast and lunch since the start of the school year. Kathy really appreciates the elementary school's willingness to try doing the, before the bell, or after the bell, sorry, after the bell breakfast at the elementary school. And just so you can see, before we started, we, September and October, our average numbers were in the 40s and 50s. And then we tried a pilot program in November and December at an elementary school, and they were in the 90s for breakfast. And now that it's across the whole elementary school, our numbers are around 200 on average. So we really appreciate their willingness to try this program, because we do think it benefits the kids. And I know it's, it's been going through a growing pain, but I, we really think it's, it's in the best interest of children. And I've also showed you our middle school and high school numbers for lunch and breakfast are also just amazing. With Kathy's leadership, we've just been providing some really great options for students to eat. And my goal is always to see how many free and reduced kids, because I want that participation up to like almost 100%. And, and we're in the 60s to 70% for free and reduced kids eating breakfast or lunch. And I, I just want to make sure they take advantage of that opportunity.
Good. Questions at all? Thank you. Mrs. Strike, District Administrator.
Just a couple of things. First of all, about the spring primary luncheon, we had the drawing for the names on the ballot. And so the order on the ballot will be Amy Litcher, followed by Melissa Ruglett-Walker. And again, that's April 7th. I've attached our updated pandemic plan. We really haven't talked about this since H1N1. So we were able to use a template provided by DPI, and I've attached that, and you can see that we've actually put people's names in all of the recommended committees and all those kinds of things. And there is one spot for a board member. So I want to take a moment to see if any of you had any interest in, if called upon to, if we have to enact certain parts of the pandemic plan, if any of you would want to serve in that role. Rachel?
Great.
Thank you. We continue to monitor the whole coronavirus situation. I think I probably have 10 to 15 correspondents a day from health organizations. Tony Zastro is working literally night and day to keep track of everything. I learned today that at 2:00 every day, the county releases the statistics for the county, and we continue to be at zero for Jefferson County. So that's great. But the next thing that you are going to hear about from us is that we are going to follow the Jefferson County, the CDC, the state of Wisconsin, and Jefferson County's recommendation that if someone is traveling to one of the Level 3 countries, that they do a voluntary quarantine when they return. And so there'll be some information going out to parents that if they are traveling to one of those areas, that if they, please let us know, and then we'll set up a plan for them to be communicated with about schoolwork and those kinds of things. And that would be administratively excused with documentation that they're traveling. So it's constantly evolving, like I said, and we are, we're really working hard to, to keep up with all of the information. And then I just wanted to highlight, too, just so proud of just all of our winter athletes. I mean, what a, as I said in my memo to you, what a roller coaster, you know, that we've been on, you know, especially for the boys, just, just a thrilling win. And then, you know, just watching them play their hearts out Saturday night, just an outstanding team that, in my humble opinion, we will see them at the state meet, or the state tournament. And of course, the girls, you know, just, it's just been so, so heartwarming to watch them grow and develop through the years and then achieve the success. And then we have the powerlifting club that just kind of snuck in under the radar. And that was a club that was just started a couple of years ago, started by students. And actually, eight kids qualified to go to Texas, only five can. And two, two of those people medaled, and I wanted to also highlight that there are several girls within that group as well. So really, really proud of that group as well.
Any questions at all? Thank you. Community input?
Mr. Klatz is here this evening.
Mr. Klatz.
Hello and good evening. Last month, we celebrated I Love My Public School Week, and even though it has come and gone, there's still work we can all do for the LMASD. Recently, Governor Evers rejected plans for the state's budget surplus because they did not address his proposed investments in our schools, saying, and I quote, "I will not accept a plan that continues to let the local taxpayers foot bills that the state should have to pay, and I will not accept a plan that doesn't invest in our kids and our schools for mental health, education, or special education," end quote. We urge those listening to contact your legislators to support investing in our public schools. Our members continue to engage, not just for funding, but across the state in forums on the topic of disrupted learning. We are offering solutions to the governor's office for what schools can do about students whose needs go unmet, and those whose challenging behaviors disrupt the learning of all students. Attendees of the first few forums report that members are coming with tangible solutions, we hope many of which will be implemented here in Lake Mills. In other news, Mr. Gishah and I were honored to be asked to lead the staff question and answer sessions with our top two superintendent candidates. We're looking forward to working with Dr. Olson and continuing the strong relationship LMIA has with our administration and our board. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda. These are the items under the consent agenda. Approval of February 10th, 2020 Regular Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of February 10th, 2020 Finance Committee proceedings. Approval of February 12th, 2020 Special Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of February 19th, 2020 Special Board of Education meeting minutes. Approval of vouchers and invoices. Approval of Treasurers Report. Approval of co-curricular letters of resignation. Approval of co-curricular letters of assignment. Approval of support staff resignation. Approval of support staff letters of assignment. Does anyone want to pull anything out of there? If not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moving seconded. Moving second to approve the consent agenda. Could we have roll call, please?
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Abstain.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. And that passes unanimously with one abstention. Action items, approval of district administrator contract.
I move the board approve the contract of Dr. Tanya Olson beginning July first, twenty-twenty as district administrator and welcome her to the district.
Second.
Second. Dr. Delaney, um, any discussion? Any comments? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Um, approval of the LAUDY system at Lake Mills High School. Now, if you remember, we tabled it last, um, meeting. I wanted everybody here to vote on it, so we're going to have to bring it off the table and we need a motion to that effect.
I move to take from the table the motion relating to the high school LAUDY system.
Second.
Moving second to take, uh, to take the motion, um, and place it on the table. Uh, roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Now, we need to vote on the motion, so I need a motion for that.
I move the board approve the LAUDY system at Lake Mills High School, beginning with the class of two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Moving second to approve the LAUDY system. Any discussion or comments on that?
Mr. Vogel and Mrs. Sweeney are both here this evening to answer any questions that might have come up in the last month.
No, I wasn't here, um, for the February discussion. I just want to indicate that I think it's an excellent, excellent idea.
Any other comments?
Have you received many concerns from people? Not too much? Good. Not too much? Everybody understand it?
I mean, no concerns, but have you gotten questions from people?
I've got concerns from staff.
Oh, from staff? Okay. Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I had one last time and I didn't write it down.
Oh.
I was hoping we'd have like another little presentation, but that's okay. I know it wasn't major. I'll, I'll remember it and ask it later.
Roll call, please.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Uh, approval of utility easement agreement with the city of Lake Mills.
As you might remember, when we started this whole project, um, there was an easement required so that we could, um, move the water hydrants and finish all that work out by the athletic fields. And this is just, um, that information is provided by the city.
I move the board approve the utility easement agreement with the city of Lake Mills.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that?
Although it was a little difficult to, um, to follow the document that was attached. I'm assuming that the easement follows the water line.
The water line, yes. It is very dense reading.
Yes, so.
I noticed that too.
Roll call, please.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of audit firm.
Um, we, our current contract with Baker Tilly has ended, so we, um, went out for RFP for our audit services. We sent out bids to eight different companies in the area. We received five bids back, um, one of which was Baker Tilly. Um, in reviewing the bids and looking at references, we are recommending to go with, um, the audit bid from the Whipfley, um, firm. I've done reference checks on some of the districts that they work with currently and received very positive, um, feedback. I will, I mean, I regret to leave Baker Tilly because they've done a great job for us the last several years, but, um, understanding that we need to bid this out every so many years, um, we're recommending to go Whipfley. And it's also nice to get another set of eyes and, you know, looking over our books and making some new suggestions for procedures and practice.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the bid from Whipfley CPAs and consultants from Madison, Wisconsin for audit services for two thousand nineteen, twenty, two thousand twenty, twenty-one and two thousand twenty-one, twenty school years.
Oh, it's supposed to be twenty-two. Twenty-one, twenty-two.
It was supposed to say twenty-one, twenty-two.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry about that.
Twenty-one, twenty-two school years.
Second.
Moving second to approve the new, um, bid on, on audit. Um, any questions or comments on that?
So this is a three-year contract.
Yeah, and it can be extended another two years. Um, can do that.
We would just add it is the low bid.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of support staff OPEB placement, and that stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits.
This is the situation that I shared with you, that's kind of a unique situation that we discussed and, uh, the proposal and, um, her, her proposal and our response to be moved to tier one is included in your information.
I move the board approve tier one post-employment benefits for Ms. Nancy Rens.
Second.
Moving second to approve the new, um, uh, placement on tier one for, um, Nancy Rens. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff retirement.
Another one of my former classmates is, uh, requesting consideration for retirement this year as well.
I move the board approve the retirement of Mr. Glenn Shanky, high school social studies teacher at the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and thank him for his thirty-two years of service to the Lake Mills students and community.
Second.
Comments, questions?
I just want to say, we'll miss Glenn. I've known him since I was a, a boy. I played sports with him. He coached me.
Really?
In football and he'll be, uh, missed in the halls here, I'm sure, so, um, but I wish him well. He's got some new knees. He's ready to roll, so.
All right. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Uh, approval of professional staff resignations.
This is the time of year when, um, we often see resignations and we have five of them today for a wide range of reasons. And I tried to spell that out for you, um, rather than waiting until, um, our exit interviews, I wanted to give you a, a summary of, of why each of those staff members have decided to, um, leave us, so that all that information is for you, there for you.
Motion, please.
I move the board approve the following professional staff resignations at the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year and thank the individuals for their dedication to the Lake Mills students and community. Lisa Lutz, third grade teacher. Sharon Kildow, middle school math teacher. Tara, Tara Williams, ELL coordinator. Jenny Nichols, elementary school reading specialist. And Dan Furkovich, high school special education teacher.
Second.
Moving second to approve the staff resignations. Questions? Roll call, please.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of professional staff contract for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
So you may remember earlier this year that, uh, one of our high school counselors resigned and Mrs. Sweeney, um, stepped up and took on some extra responsibilities again and, and stayed, um, and said that, that we could wait. We didn't think it was appropriate to hire mid-year. We were worried about the pool. So we went to, um, hiring for next year and just had seriously outstanding candidates. It was a very, very difficult choice, um, between our finalists. And, uh, we are recommending Ms. Carmen Fulmer. She, um, will begin mid-August. Okay, so it's for next year.
I move the board approve Ms. Carmen Fulmer, school counselor for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
Second.
Moving, uh, second to approve the school counselor position. Questions on that? Comments? Roll call, please.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Um, approval of gifts. Mr. Radell.
We have one.
Almost.
Oh, the varsity basketball team.
Baseball.
Almost missed the trip.
Um, this is the trip that they take each year to play baseball at a beautiful.
Up in the Dells?
At a beautiful location.
I move the board approve the overnight baseball team trip in April two thousand twenty. It's understood the board will accept no liability and incur no costs.
Second.
Moving second to approve the, uh, baseball trip, team trip. Any questions on that? Roll call.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Robert Temprio.
Aye.
David Radell.
Aye.
Rachel Davies.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of gifts.